We'd like to welcome everybody to the Fruita City Council meeting. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Deb, would you please call roll? Wait, are you ready, Shannon?
All right.
Oh, ask Shannon if he's ready.
Councillor Breaman.
I am here.
Councillor Perser.
Yeah.
Councillor Williams.
Yes, ma'am.
Councillor Cry. Councillor Miller. Councillor Hansi is excused absent.
All right, we're gonna move into our moment of silence and pledge of allegiance. If you would please all stand with me. We'd like to take this opportunity, allow all face and beliefs, the opportunity for a silent prayer. Thank you. If you'd please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Republic of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under a single ball of liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda?
Are no changes to the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
All right, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconds.
Councillor Breaman?
Yes.
Councillor Perser?
Yes.
Councillor Williams?
Yes.
Councillor Cry?
Yes.
Councillor Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, we do not have any proclamations or presentations tonight. We're gonna open it up to public participation, so this is a time to set aside to listen to comments by the public regarding items that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. With that, Shannon, is there anybody online that would like to speak on our public comment time?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll close public comment and move into our consent agenda. So these are items where all conditions or requirements have been agreed to or met prior to the time they come before council for final action. They'll all be approved by a single motion of counsel. We're gonna open that up to public comment. Shannon, are you seeing anybody online that'd like to comment on consent?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll close the consent and bring it back to council. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or do we have a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
We got a first and a second. Any other comments? All right, hearing none, Deb, would you please poll council?
Councillor Perser?
Yes.
Councillor Williams?
Mm-hmm.
Councillor Cry?
Hi.
Councillor Miller? Councillor Breaman?
Yes, what was that?
Passes five zero.
Sorry, Mrs. Woods, yes.
All right, with that, we've got two public hearings. One's quasi judicial and the next one's legislative. So our first quasi judicial hearing is a special event liquor permit application. And we've got Deb Woods, your city clerk, to present on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Deb Woods, deputy city clerk for the city of Fruita, presenting the chamber's special event liquor permit application for their annual banquet. They have requested to sell and serve alcohol beverages at their banquet to be held in the gymnasium at the Fruita Community Center. And the chamber will be hiring bartenders and servers who will be trained in alcohol server seller responsibility training. The diagram of the proposed license premises is included in your council packet and it illustrates the entire area of the gym at the community center. The chamber will be checking IDs and wristbands will be issued to those who are 21 or over. And chamber board members, employees, and volunteers will be monitoring the licensed area and the consumption of alcohol to ensure that no alcohol enters or leaves the area. And they will also be monitoring patrons for signs of anyone becoming noticeably intoxicated. There are any issues with this, the chamber will call the Fruita Police Department for assistance. Signage will be posted at each entrance and exit indicating no alcohol beyond this point. And Fruita Chief of Police Dave Kraus reviewed the chamber's application and issued a statement that there is nothing that would prohibit the issuance of the license being requested. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation to the city council that the application for the special event liquor permit be approved, subject to the following conditions. Applicant will discontinue serving alcohol at 10:30 PM on Saturday, April 15th, 2023, to allow patrons 30 minutes to finish their beverages and leave the area. Two, all alcohol will be secured and removed by 11:00 PM. Three, the entrance and exit shall be monitored closely and continuously by event staff in order to prevent alcoholic beverages from going into or out of the area. And four, the licensee needs to be aware that they're solely responsible for control of the licensed premises in regard to alcohol possession, consumption, and adherence to state and municipal laws. That includes my presentation and Hillary Daniels with the Fruita Chamber is present virtually this evening. And she's here as the applicant's representative, so I'll turn it over to Hillary for any additional comments she may have.
Thanks, Deb.
Hi, guys. I just wanted to say thank you again for your time. And we have also hired Hydra Security to to secure the premises indoor and out as well. Our last call will be at 10:00 PM and then at 10:30, there will be no more alcohol served. And yeah, and as she was saying, we will make sure that security and volunteers will be checking IDs. And again, thank you so much for your time. We appreciate it.
All right, thanks, Hillary. With that, don't go anywhere. We may have questions for you. With that, we're gonna open up to public comment. For anybody that'd like to speak on this item, now is your opportunity to do so. So is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? Shannon, are you seeing anybody online?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll close public comment and bring you back to council. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this item?
Am I allowed to vote on this?
Yes. Yeah, you serve on the board. Yeah, you don't have any financial gain from. Or does it? Yeah. How much? Never mind, I won't go there. All right, any questions for Hillary? I'm not hearing any, so do we have a motion for this item?
I move to approve the application for a special events permit for the Fruita Area Chamber of Commerce to serve alcohol beverages, malt, vineyards, and spirituous during the Fruita Area Chamber of Commerce Annual Banquet on Saturday, April 15th, 2023, from 5:00 to 11:00 PM at the Fruita Community Center located at 324 North Colson Street, subject to the conditions stated by staff. That said 11, you guys said 10:30, which is correct.
10:30 is our last call, so everybody, no, 10:00, sorry, 10 o'clock, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, I'm sorry. My daughter was distracting me.
All right, so we've got a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, we've had a first and a second. Any other comments? All right, hearing none, Deb, would you please poll council?
Councillor Williams?
Yes.
Councillor Cry?
Hi.
Councillor Miller?
Yes.
Councillor Breaman?
Yes.
Councillor Perser?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, thanks, Hillary, for being here.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah. All right, with that, we're gonna move into our legislative hearing, which is Resolution 2023-07, amending the 2023 budget with supplemental appropriations. We've got our assistant city manager, Shannon Vasson, here presenting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, for the opportunity to present tonight. The resolution before you is a supplemental budget amendment to the 2023 budget. Each year, at the beginning of the year, we have to roll over funds that were budgeted in the prior year, but those projects or pieces of equipment were not purchased in that year, so we have to roll them over into the next budget year. So in this case, it'd be projects that may have been in the 2022 budget. Were not completed, and then we're rolling over into the 2023 budget. In addition to that, we do have several new appropriations for the 2023 budget. We also have two reductions in appropriations for the 2023 budget, just meaning after the council adopted the budget in December, we ended up spending expenses for these specific projects, even though the budget was already adopted. We got some late invoices, so we have to decrease the amount that's budgeted. As with any supplemental budget amendment, I try to provide a table at the end of the cover sheet that kind of outlines all the changes. I won't go through all these unless the council would like to, but I'll probably just highlight some of the bigger ones from this table. The first one is a supplemental appropriation for $635,000. That is for the purchase of property in Fruita. Additionally, we have 30, almost $40,000 being appropriated to the marketing promotion fund for a grant that we received from the Office of International Economic Development and International Trade to create a gravel adventure guide with the town of Palisade. We have $160,000 in the capital projects fund for a grant we received from the multimodal and mitigation options fund to help fund the design of the Highway 340 trail connection. As far as other projects, we have about $1.3 million that we're re-appropriating to the Pine Street Bridge. That's the balance that we have for the, for the bridge replacement over there. We have $400,000 for the remodel that we're doing to the civic center. And then we have a small decrease in appropriations in the capital projects fund for prospector park improvements. We ordered the equipment. We anticipated that would be delivered in 2023, got delivered in 2022, installed in 2023. So we purchased the equipment in 2022, paid for the install in 2023. So that concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor. I'm always happy to take any questions if the council has any. Thank you.
All right, with that, we're gonna open it up to public comment. Oh, wait.
Sorry, I did have one more. This does include a $15,000 contribution to the Fruita Housing Authority out of the Economic Development Fund. So that, as this group knows, the Fruita Housing Authority has a proposed budget before them. They have to adopt that budget at one of their future meetings, and this is our agency contribution to them. We chose the Economic Development Fund because we only have $10,000 in expenses set aside for that this year. I have $100,000 budgeted, so this would increase our expenses for the Economic Development Fund to 25,000, because we have the GJEFF contribution and the housing authority contribution. Now that concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. With that, then we're gonna open it up to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? Hearing none here. Shannon, is there anybody online?
Seeing none.
All right, with that, then we're gonna close public comment and bring you back to council. Does anybody have any questions for Shannon? All right, hearing none, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt Resolution 2023-07, amended the 2023 budget to appropriate funds in the general fund, Economic Development Fund, Marketing and Promotion Fund, and Capital Projects Fund for special projects, capital projects, and the purchase of real property, and re-appropriating funds in the general fund, capital projects fund, and sewer fund for capital projects and capital equipment originally included in the 2022 annual budget, and a reduction appropriation for the purchase of parks equipment in the Conservation Trust Fund.
All right, we had a first and a second. Any other questions or comments?
I just wanted to say, Shannon, thank you for the way you laid that out. It was absolutely phenomenal. Every single thing made a lot of sense. We knew exactly where it was going and why it was going and where it was coming from. I appreciate it. It was very perfect. Good job.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, hearing none, Deb, would you please poll council?
Councillor Cry?
Hi.
Councillor Miller? Councillor Breaman?
Yes.
Councillor Perser?
Yes.
Councillor Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, with that, we're gonna move into our city manager's report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just a few updates. The first is, we have to make a couple adjustments to the boards and commission tentative schedule that I sent out to you all, and those are just two changes. The first would be the Fruita Tourism Advisory Council. When I put that proposed schedule out, I had not contemplated, we had not contemplated the fact that they would need to meet before they present to you all. They do have a meeting this week, but they're gonna be missing their chair and a few other members who asked for, so the whole group could actually meet. So their next meeting will be April 20th, so we'll schedule them after that to present to council, so they have time to meet together and discuss what they're presenting. And then the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and they were supposed, on that schedule would have been tonight, and that's why they're not on tonight. And then the Parks and Rec Advisory Board was going to give an update to council, and we had that tentatively scheduled for April 4th, but you have a pretty full night that night with the housing authority and the city council meeting that came up after that schedule, so we're gonna work with them to reschedule to a future meeting. Both of those, if you remember, are presenting to you in a regular meeting, and then there's a date that we had where they would be discussed at a workshop. And their workshop discussions are out there away, so we have plenty of options to reschedule them beforehand. So I just wanted to let you know that. I think all the rest will be able to stay the same. We may look at the Historic Preservation Board changing because they're, they're one of the last workshops scheduled, so they could have time leading up to that to give their update, but we may just leave it. But I just want to let you know, that's why there's some changes, and you'll receive updates via email when they're scheduled. And we will work with the staff and council liaisons to work with the groups to get those scheduled for council. Next week's workshop, I just wanted to go over, we have, we have a number of items that have kind of stacked up on this one, and I wanted to, I wanted to go over those with you real quick and get your feedback. If we want to consider any rescheduling, or if we think we can tackle these next Tuesday. The first is a discussion that is with, about the downtown advisory board, and then with the downtown advisory board. That's first on the list. The second is an opportunity for you all to discuss, just boards and commissions in general, further discuss the liaison roles. I think that was a request when we had the discussion in the meeting to talk about it further at a workshop. Third, we wanted to have a quick discussion and update with you all about gaming establishments. You've probably noticed some of the other jurisdictions in the valley doing moratoriums on gaming establishments. We, we we have a couple things that they don't have in our, in our toolbox, are ready for when those go through the approval process, one being business licensing, and then the other being a, I know, I'm gonna say this wrong, but an opinion that the planning director, it's a written interpretation that's in the, in the code. What we don't have is something that just directly deals with them in the land use code, so we'd like to talk to you about where we're at now, and then what we might want to consider for the future, and just answer any questions you have, because you've, like I said, you've probably seen in the newspaper, a couple, a couple of our other jurisdictions doing moratoriums, and they're working on updates to their codes related to those establishments. The fourth is, we have a request that came through, I think through, yes, Matthew Breaman, our mayor pro temp, and and it was from somebody that would like to make a donation towards the Fruita Bark Park, Dog Park, and with a request for, not to completely change the name, but have, based on the donation of a friend who passed away, have, have their name in it. We do have a 2003 policy for things like this, so we have, we have, we have a process where people can purchase benches in memories of loved ones, and those can be placed in different public settings. We, we have, we have this precedent with some other parks. The, the process, and we'll put this, when we do talk about it, we can put this in the, in the packet and send it out ahead of time. It's, it's a pretty extensive process, I would say. I mean, it's, it's something that the council deals with. There's a committee that gets formed. There's a, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Obviously, that process can be amended or changed by the city council. But we do have this request that just came in, and so we'd like to at least have an initial discussion with the group. It doesn't mean you have to do anything, but, but there, there is a need to discuss it, and I think about a $10,000 or more donation.
A signage plus other maintenance items.
Right. And then, and then a quick one, we have the proclamation to consider Mesa County RSVP 50th anniversary for a proclamation at a future meeting, so. So there's really four discussion items there. I would say if we had to pull one, I mean, it's, it's, it's up to you all, but we kind of need to make at least plans for how we handle, you know, downtown advisory board, the gaming establishments, and this request for the dog park donation.
Mike, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
You, you did them, I think, in order of what we were gonna present, correct? Were we gonna have the discussion about our policies, about boards first? I mean, I guess I was trying to think why we would talk to the downtown advisory board or talk about that, and then have that, and then have our policy discussion after. Wouldn't we want to have a policy discussion first? I mean, that's, I don't, I guess I'm trying to figure out how that fits together.
I think, I think you definitely could. The downtown board is, is definitely a focus of their, what their current purpose should be, and a couple questions they have of the council that they asked. The policy, or the policy discussion isn't something that we had planned to do after you met with all these boards. It was something that you all just discussed about your own roles as liaisons, how often to be on those, whether or not you want to have liaisons.
That won't affect, I guess, the discussion. Okay.
Completely up to you all. If, I mean, the order, I kind of put them on as, as we collected them, not necessarily.
No, I want to make sure it didn't interfere with the discussion with the downtown. That's all I was, so no, that's fine. I, I, I was just, I wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
We, what we could do, if you'd like, is we could put that one last potentially, and then that way, if, if everything else took too much time, you have the opportunity to say, let's have this discussion at a future meeting, or. Okay. Yeah. All right, and then we do have, we just, we just put this out to the public, but we have our spring cleanup scheduled for April 29th. This is for yard debris and larger items that, it's not electronics, that's our fall. We have a, with waste management and electronics cleanup that happens here in the parking lot, but, or, well, we've had it at different locations, but but this is the, the one we started just a couple years ago, so we do have that out there. And then council member Aaron Hansi brought this idea up to me, and I wanted to bring, I told him I'd bring it up tonight, even though he wasn't able to be here. We keep a running list of what's coming up on, we do internally, what's coming up on city council meetings. But I thought this was a good idea that you brought up, that you all don't tend to find out unless it's during an update like this, or when you get your packet, or when we're discussing, and we say, okay, let's plug that in. But I'd be happy to make available, we have to be careful with like a live document that can be edited, because that could turn into a meeting, and we don't want that to happen. But we could have one that's just, just viewable, where you see the tentative items coming up on, you know, for a few months out. Of course, we'll be adding and changing based on discussions we have or items that come up, but at least it would give you an opportunity to, to have one link that you could always look at and see what's coming, in case that helps, just kind of think through it. And then when we're having these discussions and updates, and I bring, we bring something up, or we're thinking about a new item we want to talk about, there's a little bit more in your mind about, you know, what, what we're seeing. And we could put it on the screen at those moments if we need to, but is that something you'd be interested in? Just realizing that it, it would, it would change, and we not, we wouldn't necessarily be sending you an email every time it changes, because it would change quite often, but it would be a reference point. We were thinking, just, I was thinking internally, we already have like a Word document. We could easily convert that into a similar format where it just has the dates and some of the items coming up. If that would work for you all, unless you have any suggestions or concerns, or if, or if it's something you need or not, I mean.
Just has an idea on our packets. Have that listed in the packet, like, maybe, I don't know if it's available. This is doable, but have it as a live link within our packets, so that way is kind of going through what's coming up next week. It's just there, we can click on it right from there and view it. Is that?
Potentially. I'm just thinking about the software we use. I think, I think we could look at, there might be a way to do something like that.
Or does that need to be firewalled?
Are you saying in the email? I'm, I'm thinking in the email. You just have a link in the, for the council packet, and then have another.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
That's what I was thinking.
That's a better idea.
And that way, we've got it. I guess I could want to have some type of disclaimer. Wait, wait, we've got Mary Elizabeth on the line. We probably want some type of disclaimer, because things can change, and you want the public showing up. What I, oh, I saw.
Can I interject for just a second? I, I would hesitate. I would hesitate to keep it, I mean, to Mike's point that it is a working document. And, you know, I guess he could, you know, they could put it in a PDF format or something that is not editable, but and it really is work product, and you know, if it goes out with packets, then you know, the, not that the public can't see it, what's coming up, but you know, obviously, this is a working document. Things would change. And again, to, to your point, I don't want people to get confused that, you know, it's listed right now under, you know, March 28th, but then it gets bumped for whatever reason till May, you know what I mean? So I think it's a great idea for you guys to be able to see it, but probably not go out each time with the packet, so that there's a distinction between the two.
And I, I think what Mary Elizabeth's talking about is the, when we send the packets out to you all, it's sent to a large, much larger group than you all, so there, it's a, it's a listserv, essentially, that people are subscribed to. We could send, we could send it out twice and just send it to that group, but then send it to you with, with, and just add this link to this document. But I, 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 let us look into how we could do it, so we don't cause confusion, but make it easy for you to be able to check on it when you want to. But again, it won't be editable, so you couldn't put notes on it. You still have to like, bring it up in a meeting like this, or something like that, if you have a, a change or a suggestion. But at least it gives you a glance, a glimpse of some of the items that are potentially coming up. Our concern, I, I think for that purpose, it's great. Our concern, and trying to figure it out, is again, what Mary Elizabeth's saying, is not giving people the impression, or the public the impression, or the intention that we are for sure talking about these items, and people start planning to be at a meeting when it could change, you know. What's on the packet are the official notices, right, of, and the, and the agendas, so.
You're gonna have to speak in a mic if, or Michael have to repeat what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then can you just call it a tentative schedule, and then that way, if it, if it pops out, and then you can go, anybody goes, hey, it's set on there, well, it's a tentative schedule.
Yeah.
But I think that's probably the best way. If she's already doing it, may as well just include us in there.
I think we can just, instead of putting it, yeah.
Just let you guys figure.
We'll figure it out. We will get it, so you have it.
Yes, we like the idea.
Sounds good.
Thumbs up on the idea, I think.
Great, and that's all the updates for tonight.
All right, with that, we're moving to council reports and actions. So our first item, wow, look at it, Mary Elizabeth is on the line. A discussion concerning an increase in the city attorney legal fees. So is, are you gonna do the opening statement on this mic, or is Mary Elizabeth just gonna jump in and let us know? All right. You're up, Mary Elizabeth.
Okay, so you have a short memo for me in the packet, as well as a cover sheet. And when the city of Fruita first engaged Garfield and Heck back in 2018, we actually had you guys, and I don't actually know the exact reason why, but $5 less per hour than our other municipal clients. And then per the rules of professional conduct, our firm can increase rates by 10% each year. Well, what that has done is continued to keep Fruita $5 behind. And it just, it gets a little confusing for staff and for billing purposes, just because when they set up new matters, you know, it doesn't look the same. And so my request would be to just bump you guys up $5 per hour, so that moving forward, you're at the same municipal rate as our other municipal clients. And this would be something you're not deciding tonight. I'm giving you the information. And if it sounds okay, then we would put it on the agenda at a next meeting for approval.
Because we'd have to revise the contract, correct? Or would we not? We can't hear you. You're, you're.
Sorry about that. We, we wouldn't have to revise the whole contract, but we would, I would need to, you know, have, yes, in writing that change to bump it up.
Okay, I, I just have one question. You didn't want to bring this up last meeting?
To be honest, it was only brought up to me last week as David McConaughey, kind of the municipal partner in our office, was looking at all the municipal rates for going forward. So, no, it was not intentional to keep it separate from my review.
All right, yeah, all right, I just want to say that. All right, is there any questions or discussion on this? Does anybody have any? Wait, don't be saying that too loud, all right? So. Does anybody have any concerns on this? Yeah, I just, I'll, I can ask, I want to ask staff, what's that look like in our budget, then? Is that gonna affect any, I mean, are we gonna have to reappropriate before the end of the year from what we budgeted, or?
Well, we do our best estimate for all of our legal fees for the year. We are definitely running higher than normal with legal fees this year. I mean, considering everything, right, considering we have more water work this year. We have more housing work that we haven't had in the in the past. We have, we've had, we've just had even more municipal work, which I don't see going away. I mean, I think it's the nature of of the of the work we have. So I mean, it it, yes, it's an increase, but as we would do, we would have to. If if we run into where we're spending more than we need to with legal. It's it's something we come back to council before it's gone and we talk about reappropriation. And I don't think we're over, we're not, we're utilizing our legal services as we need to. We're not, you know, using legal more than we need to. I guess what I'm saying is it's. It's for the work that we need them to review. So it's just a matter of demand.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Out of curiosity, do you know how many hours were billed last year?
I don't off the top of my head, but it is something we could, we could look up and let you know.
It doesn't.
I don't know if anybody.
It was more of a curiosity.
Yeah, I'm curious to that, too.
It doesn't influence this.
I I can easily get that information and just, it might be faster actually just for me to ask our bookkeeper. Because obviously we've got Fruta all in one spot. So I can get that information and get it out to Mike and for you guys to see. But as he said, I I I I can tell there's just a difference in the last, I'd say, starting at the end of 2022. And coming into 2023, you guys just have had more going on than you did, let's say, this time last year.
All right, is everybody good with that?
We need to make a vote.
No, because they're gonna put it on a future agenda.
No vote. I appreciate the thumbs up, though.
All right. Well, thank you, Mary Elizabeth. All right, with that. We're moving to our council reports and actions. Matthew gave me eye contact, so go ahead, Matthew.
Happy to start off. Two things, report on chamber meeting. There's the annual banquet coming up on the 15th, as evidenced by the request for the liquor license. We're thrilled that the floor is done in time. By the way, it looks great. But a lot of the discussion was about the role of the Chamber Foundation. We spent some time looking at the annual report, which just became public, I think, today, so please go take a look at it. And a fair amount of time talking about financials. For the G jet meeting that happened last week, the bulk of the meeting. Was about board structure and board involvement. The funny part is they sent out a board survey and. Half the board actually reported back to the server about board engagement. So that kind of is an indicator that it needs to be a discussion.
And including two, two from Fruta, so including two.
One board position and we got two.
Yeah, yeah, well.
Out of the nine people that actually were actively engaged. Two were from Fruta, so. That's just.
Think of the name changed?
No, I didn't get to make, but that's just how we roll here in Fruta. So that was the topic of the conversation there. I sent an email out to Mike. I thought last, just a general note, last Friday's city, the Friday update in the city link was just very, very well done. It kind of captured the swab, saving fair Fruta. So kind of takes away the elegance of it if you can't pronounce it. But I just thought it was very, very well done. And then the only other question I had is. Do we have an ETA on housing authority emails?
My goodness, that was, so we we have. So we, we have purchased the domains that we purchased to so that we didn't have something. Remotely similar to to the domain that we have. And I should have followed up on that today again, but our our contracted IT company was setting those up. And they should be set up now that we have the domains, but. I'm not sure if Shannon hasn't heard either, so we'll we'll check. Well, we should have those soon.
All right, thank you.
It's not take long once you have the domain. I know we finally closed in on those and. And then we we got them all the name, each of your, you know, exactly what it should be, what the email address should be. And so I imagine we, we just seem to follow up with them.
What is the domain name?
It's. Fruta. I think it's Fruta Housing. Do you remember Dan? Fruta Housing.org or com? Oh, yeah, dot org, Fruta Housing.org, but we have Fruta Housing Authority domain as well, just so that we don't. Have confusion in the in the future.
That's it for me, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Janine?
I, the Arts and Culture Board had their Coco Vino event. And it, as I think most of you knew, previous to it, the tickets sold out. It was a great, we had a great, great time. Only 15 people didn't show up, so out of all the tickets that were, I mean, you get the money regardless of if they come or not. But that's a tremendous turnout and the music was fantastic. And everyone just seemed to have a great time. There was a live auction. It was, it was just really good. And I'm sure at our next meeting, we'll go over, you know, a few things to tweak for next year, but it was a great success. They were, everybody was really happy. And the Downtown Advisory Board decided to just make their meeting our workshop meeting, so we didn't meet. And then the Livability Commission met last week. And they are continuing to narrow down on what they want their goals to be, and they have three kind of focus areas. But they're also looking forward to hearing from, you know, what we have to say because they'll be our April workshop, so. That's all I have. Do you want to say anything more about that?
All right, thank you. James?
Nothing for me.
The only thing I want to mention is I, we had a strategic planning with the Colorado National Monument Association this weekend at the fire station. And one of the things that we put on our agenda for the next few years is. The monument is running out of space. They don't have housing for people. And they they are contemplating taking over some of the housing they have up there for administration and stuff. So their housing problem is gonna get worse. And so CNMA is gonna start looking at creative ways, maybe grant writing, stuff like that to try to tackle the housing crisis that. That little group is having. So I told you, Hannah, she might reach out to you to maybe. See if there's, you know, find out what fruit is up to, see if there's other options, maybe potential partnering. Options that you might know of, stuff like that, so. She might call you, I don't know. That's it. We we did have a meeting, I'm sorry, Grand Valley Regional Transit had a a meeting to. To agree to a letter of support. We were gonna do that by via email, but Dennis wanted to have a meeting instead of an email, so we had a meeting. Last week. That's it.
All right, Amy?
Planning was, we got pretty simple. And then I had some awesome feedback for the building department. A couple of, couple of holders and agents have made comments, so. Woo hoo, I haven't heard anything negative yet, which is absolutely awesome. One of them that commented was actually one of the signatures on. So that was. And.
Expect more of those.
Yeah, Matthew already addressed the dog perk. And then I attended the engagement event today with her. I think we should do that again. We should have a do over, but.
Learn how to play pinochle.
Love to, actually.
Hey, at the end, they invited us to come learn pinochle, so we're gonna take them up on that. It might not, we're not gonna put it like out as a big event, but we're gonna go learn how to play pinochle with them, so. We call that a win at the end of the.
Were they upset because you guys were just interfering with what they were doing or did they have serious stuff they were talking about?
They, like, no, they they like it extremely quiet when they play pinochle. And so just other groups in there at the time.
Yeah, they didn't. Okay. All right. I was just curious. We had actually concerns.
If Amy wouldn't have heckled them all while they were trying to play.
It was not even in.
Yeah, she wasn't.
I remembered something. Sweet ladies.
Are you, are you done then? All right, we'll go back to Janine then.
Remembered something just when you were getting accolades about the building department. This doesn't have anything with, to do with building department, but it does have to do with Fruta. Colin just told me this story right before I came. Two of our Fruta citizens were climbing a mountain in Ecuador the other day. And ran into some people while they were up there and they were talking, oh, where are you from? We're from Fruta, Colorado. We love Fruta. Everyone we know wants to move there, but they can't afford it. But. Housing affordability, we know that's an issue, but just the cool, I mean, they weren't, they're not even from Colorado, but they're from the United States and they were. Like, how does that happen? It was a crazy, yes, we, everyone lives there and wants to live there. Yeah, it's just proof that fruit is cool. That's all.
All right. Anybody else have a second before I get into mine? Mine might be really long. Everybody got the email from Mike on the Rocky Mountain PBS thing on Wednesday, April 5th. So if anybody can make that, that'd be great. The other thing is every quarter, Mason County invites all the mayors to a mayor's luncheon. And where they just, we just kind of update on what's going on. I didn't know if there's anything anybody wanted me to bring up tomorrow. I mean, it's Mason County is just trying to get. Feedback from all the different municipalities and it's an informal lunch, so I don't know if there's anything anybody. Needs me to bring up there, but normally I'm just updating on what, I'm sure the big discussion will be from Greg on the fiber. Will be the big discussion on the fiber, on the fiber. But since we've already got that worked out, so I just wanted to give you guys the opportunity, if there's anything you wanted me to bring up. I can.
I can't think of anything, but if I think of something, I'll.
All right. Yeah, I'll tell them how amazing the building department is. Cody won't be there, Janet's there, so they only have, you know, the chair. Yeah, yeah, perfect timing. So, all right, well, that's all I have on there. So with that, we've got a couple of executive sessions to move into. So we're gonna need a motion to convene an executive session.
Move to convene into executive session.
You gotta read the. Oh, you should know this.
Just get confused. Is that what we have to read on the bottom of page 123?
I don't, it it's item C, yeah, whatever page that number is, yeah, 123, yes.
And you do need to read the whole thing, but just read the first one because we're doing this in two separate sessions again.
Are we missing a section 10, item B?
I move, we move to into executive session for determining positions relative to matters. That may be subject to negotiation, developing strategy for negotiations. And instructing negotiations pursuant to CRS section 24 dash 6 dash 4024E. With regards to requests for, from in build LLC Fruta Muse. And receiving legal advice from the city attorney and special counsel pursuant to CRS SEC. Our section rather 24 dash 6 dash 4024B regarding the same.
That's a awful. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we've had a first and a second discussion. All right, hearing none, would you please poll council?
Council Miller?
Yes.
Council Bremen?
Yes.
Council Perser?
Yes.
Council Williams? And Council Cry?
Hi.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right, so with that, we're gonna probably take what, three to five minutes because we're gonna have to log in as a separate meeting, so.
Yes, but I can also announce that once we come out of this, we will not be going back into the open meeting.
They're powwowing in the bathroom.
So there's no 10B. So we've done 10C. So now we're going to 10D.
Correct. We already did 10B. That was our council reports and actions.
There's 10A.
You did. No, it's 10B.
We're going to move into our second executive session and we'll need a motion, just so anybody in the audience knows, we will not, once we come out of that executive session, we will not be having any other agenda items. So with that, we need a motion to move into the, our second executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I move we move an executive session to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and instructing negotiators pursuant to Colorado Vice Statute Section 24-6-4024E with regard to a potential sale of Enix Lake and with regard to amending the agreement between the City of Fruta and the Ute Water Conservancy District and receiving legal advice from the city attorney pursuant to Colorado Vice Statute Section 24-6-4024B regarding the same.
I'll second that.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any discussion?
All right, you need to have our attorney on the line.
She will on the executive session. She'll come in and executive.
Oh.
All in favor?
Oh, I have to do that after no other discussion? All right. Can you want to poll council? Shannon?
Councillor Miller?
Yes.
Councillor Cry?
Hi.
Councillor Williams?
Heck, right. You did the fir-, who made the motion?
Yes.
Councillor Perser?
Yes.
Councillor Bremen?
Uh huh.
Five zero.
It feels good, don't it? Good one.
What?
Oh my gosh.
All right.
Yeah, nice.